Accumulation of household garbage on our property. Many, or too many campers on a lot with suspected sewage leaking on the ground. Or offensive odors from lots with dog pens that are not kept up, you know, that have a strong odor. We've had quite a few of those complaints recently. And also just lots that have accumulation of trash, old appliances, old furniture, recyclable cans and bottles and just stuff like that. Just, we get those kind of complaints. And we also, when we don't feel very safe dealing with a sanitary nuisance, we've also requested the assistance of the sheriff's office or the local police department, and they've been very cooperative in going with us out to these sites just for our protection. And on occasion, when they're, the police departments are having an issue within an area, we work with them to try to use what laws that we have to help them resolve a, just a small part to help sort of diffuse a bigger law enforcement issue. Dealing basically with sanitary nuisance regulations is what we use there. And so we work with them sometimes. Another big program that we have is beach water monitoring. We do during the summer mo, or during the year, mostly in the spring, summer and fall. We generally collect two samples a month. During the summer months, we go down to one, one sample a month at each sampling location. And if there is a, a bad water sample, we'll go back and collect another sample. If the sample isn't, if that sample is bad, then we issue an advisory that we don't recommend that folks swim in this area, which fortunately, we haven't had too many of those over the years. We do have five sample sites in Franklin County, three out on St. George Island, one at Carabel Beach, and another one out on Alligator Point. Okay? Zack has already covered environmental preparedness. We also do food safety sanitation. We inspect the kitchens at the schools, the prisons, and also, we do several bars and lounges in the county. We have about 20 of those facilities. We also inspect home, mobile home parks and recreational parks. We have about 14 of those facilities in the county. We also inspect biomedical waste. There are about 19 of those facilities. And for those non-exempt systems, which generate more than 25 pounds per year, we inspect those on an annual basis. And if those that get exempt status, generate less than 25 pounds per, excuse me, 30 days, then we inspect those once every three years. They sort of rotate through the cycle there. We also inspect public swimming pools, which we have about 37 of those in the county. And those are generally like subdivision pools or hotel pools, the larger pools. And we inspect those twice a year, and we sort of do those during the summer months, at the beginning of the season and sort of in the middle, end of the season. We also have four limited-use public water, excuse, four limited-use water systems in the county. The Big Oaks subdivision, and then Rusty Crumb seafood, and the Water Street seafood. We inspect those systems. And we expect, expect those once a year and make sure they do the compliance for water sampling. We also do group care facilities, which we only have three of those, and right now, it's just the school. So, right before school starts, we try to go out and do basically a health and safety inspection of the school property, just to make sure everything's okay. And we do that right before school starts. We do just the three of those. And we also have, do tattoo and monitoring inspections. We have one licensed permanent tattoo entity in the county, and it's just permanent eye makeup right now. Other facilities we would be involved in, but we don't have any in the county, would be body piercing, tanning. And on occasion, when required, we do food and waterborne disease surveillance and investigation if there's an outbreak. And that's basically the top of what we do. There's a lot more that we do, but these are the highlights. Do you have any questions or any comments or anything that you have?
Any question from the board member?
Okay, thank you. We're gonna have Jeremy Hodge come up, talk about a recent activity we did, recently with the.
My name's Jeremy Hodge, and I'm an environmental specialist for Franklin County. And I had the privilege of speaking at the Gulf Coast Career Day about a week ago. I got to speak to a roomful of very promising high school seniors and iterated some of the environmental science, environmental health tasks that we have, as well as some other varied tasks within the Health Department, like the nurses' station and healthy families, as well as our tobacco program. I encourage the kids to stop by our booth and learn some more information about all of our different programs. And if they wanted to speak with me about our environmental health program, you know, how we assure the quality of life in the environment in Franklin County, namely, our ATU program, ensuring the health of the bay is a, is a big talking point for me. So, we encourage them to take as much information as they wish and to try and schedule a tour of the Health Department if they so desire to, to look into those jobs if they were interested in staying in Franklin County after they graduated. Thank you.
What was neat about that is Jeremy's young enough and just cool enough to really connect with the seniors at the Career Source Day, and it was 50 seniors from Franklin K through 12. So, it was a really great opportunity. But that's just, that's just an overview of all the different environmental health programs. As you can see, there's a lot. There's a lot of inspections that take place, and really, it's just to keep the environment safe and healthy for everyone. So, thank you.
I will say, Commissioners, we use that department a whole lot. We speak to Brad most of the time, and about when we get complaints about, you know, certain too many homes, a lot of campers and stuff hooked up to sewer that shouldn't be, we rely on them. They kind of give us an initial look at what's wrong, what they think is wrong, what they can handle, what the county should handle, and then from there, we move forward with situations. So, I thank them for that, to help us out a whole lot.
That's a very informative update, and we appreciate that. Any, any questions from the board members? We do appreciate you coming in today. Thank you. I don't see one of the next two on the agenda. Let's move down to Ms. Marsha Johnson. No report from Ms. Johnson this morning. Next would be Mr. Allen Pierce, store coordinator, report.
That's him texting, on the way, should we get a pen? I'm on you, Jennifer, but she's planning to be here.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with Allen. Information. We've discussed it.
Okay. Our report's pretty straightforward. The first item, I'll be honest with you, if you want to act, we can, even though I don't have all the documents right in front of us. So, you already took care of part of this, the first action, first part of it. Now, I remember one is Board Act to approve a Dewberry contract. Mr. Marone already taken care of that. But then, that same sentence that I said, "And then Board Act to approve two task orders for FEMA-related projects, the engineering of Alligator Drive, the engineering of repairing St. George Island boat ramp." Both were damaged during Hurricane Hermine. The county is still waiting for the exact amount of the waiver we have been awarded, so it's unknown how much county funds will be required, but we need to move forward with these projects. The range of exposure to the county will be between zero and 12 and a half percent of the cost, and it depends on what the waiver is. The two task orders are attached, and I think I, actually, they're not attached at this point. Clay Kennedy and I talked about it, that they're not attached. But I can tell you that the task orders match the funding available through the FEMA PWs. In the case of St. George Island boat ramp, the maximum is $5,000, and that will come out of professional services. And the Alligator Drive project, the maximum is $50,000. Even though the PW is for like $360,000, we only are obligated to a maximum 12 and a half percent of that, because the state pays all the rest. And maybe that we're max, that we're, that we get a full waiver and we don't have to pay anything. But the maximum that we would have to pay out of the county's share would be about $50,000, and that will be funded out of the Ballpoint Trust Fund. So, I, in order to just move things along, Commissioner, I'll defer to you all. I realize that you don't have the task force, the task orders in front of you, but the number, the amount of money that you are responsible for is listed there. And I would say we approve these contingent upon the county contract being approved by Mr. Schuler. That way, we don't have to wait two weeks to get these started, because we, Alligator Drive is waiting to get designed, if you all want to move forward.
Pleasure to the board. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Likely. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Our motion carries?
Again, I won't ask the chairman to sign those until we have the contract signed. Item number two, inform the board that Mr. Marone received a letter from Mr. Ron Mowery, representing Alligator Point Water District. While the letter was addressed to Mr. Marone, the subject matter is something the board has discussed in prior years. The letter puts the county on notice that the district has water lines in and around the intersection of Tom Roberts Road and Alligator Drive that need to be dealt with when the road is rebuilt. The county staff is aware of this. The letter further requests the board support the district's desire to expand the district boundaries in exchange for the district allowing the county to soften the curve from Alligator Drive onto Tom Roberts, Tom Roberts. This letter specifically says, and I'm quoting it to you, even though I attached the letter for y'all's consideration, "We are happy to work with you in this matter, just as we would request your consideration, again, to favorably support us as we expand our water districts to better serve our customers." The letter does not describe what new district boundaries would, would be, so we can't really give you any more guidance on that. But we ask for y'all's direction on how to respond to this letter, and I've attached the full letter in my packet. And then the map of the land that the, that the water district owns is on the second page there. And as you can see, if we are not allowed to cross the county, the water district's property, we will continue to have a very sharp right-hand curve, which the residents of Alligator Point don't want, but this is an issue that, that it's in the hands of Alligator Water District. They have, you know, I, we have been having discussions over years and years, and Commissioner Sanders is full of this, aware of this, about, you know, what the district is trying to accomplish. And this is the first time they've tied two separate issues together. I mean, the district boundaries have nothing to do with this, with this road, but they're tying them together now.
You don't have anything to do with it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. The board does have an option of condemnation if we need to, if there's a necessity or a public purpose to straighten out that right-hand turn for public safety, I think that would certainly be a sufficient factual basis to move forward with the consideration of condemnation of whatever portion of that district property is necessary for public safety.
But the problem is condemnation's gonna include a payment of, of a valuation, because there's no money set aside for paying anybody anything.
Yes, there has to be compensation for the taking, of course, but I'm just pointing out that there is an option. It's not just a matter of the district cooperating or not cooperating.
I understand. But I don't have legal options. The other condemnation process we went through, we had FEMA funds to pay for that. In this case, we don't.
Well, basically, he's giving us notice.
Right.
Basically, Mr. Mowery gave it, that gave the county notice, is what they're doing. You know, and my thing, if it's a public, if it's for the public good, just like it was on the other, part of it that we did on the other side, I agree with Mr. Schuler on that. But, you know, you want to avoid that at all costs, but when it comes down and it is for the public's necessity to have that in a public need, you have to do what you gotta do.
Well, my question is, is he's wanting the county to, letter further requests the board support the district's desire to expand the district boundaries.
Right.
And it don't matter what it's in exchange for, what are all those district boundaries? You're saying in your paragraph here, we don't know.
I don't know.
So, my, my take on this is that the board table it.
Yeah.
How can you expand, I mean, how can we vote on letting them expand the district boundaries when we don't know what those boundaries are?
Well, and this is what I was gonna say. We've been there and done that so many times before on the district boundaries. We've got into, into the middle of the squabble. We don't need to be getting in those squabble, and this should not have anything to do with the, the part with the road. This shouldn't, in other words, they're trying to tie our hands to one or the other. I think we need to table it and don't have any discussion on it.
Okay.
At this time. And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman. Table it.
We have a motion on the table by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, item number three, inform the board that the Triumph Board has hired Dr. Rick Harper, a University of West Florida economics professor, as staff to help in the evaluation of the Triumph applications. The board has previously, has previously authorized me to attend the Triumph Board meetings on December 8th in Panama City, so I plan to attend to learn what progress Triumph has made in evaluating the pre-applications. I will tell you that while Mr. Harper's been hired there also, I saw the agenda this morning before the board meeting, they are still discussing administrative staff, so I don't know that any progress has been made to look into pre-apps. But I'll know more on the 8th, and I'll report back on the 19th.
On, on that issue, real quick, Alan, I don't think there's anything gonna happen before January 1st, when Senator Gates takes over as chairman of the board, so I don't look for any applications to be reviewed or anything else. Having said that, you know, we've all wondered and thought, how much, how much of this money is it gonna go to the Western counties by them hiring Dr. Rick Harper? And I seen that also in an email, which, which is University of West Florida, that kind of sets you up. So, I have concern about exactly where all this is going. And, you know, maybe at the next meeting, you know, I may ask the board to make a motion to write a letter to Senator Monford and Halsey Beshear's as, as we see these things developing. We'll, we'll learn more when Alan attends, attends his next meeting on December 8th in Panama City, but it's grave concerns when, when all your staff's been hired from the Western end of Panhandle and, you know, that's all I wanted to say on that issue.
Well, Mr. Chairman, how about us letting Alan go to the meeting on the 8th of December, and then we can take it up on the 19th of December, if you care about what we need to do. And get us a, a clear picture of which direction we're going in, because I have, I share the same concerns as the chairman here with that.
Well, you, well, actually, things may fall into our plays a little easier than writing a letter, because on item number four, the next Triumph Board meeting after December will be January 23rd, and it'll be here in Franklin County. Senator Gates will be the new chairman. So, they've asked to meet here, and so I'll just read item number four. Inform the board that Triumph Board has asked to hold a January 23rd Triumph Board meeting here in this boardroom. I've coordinated with Michael Marone to make sure the room is available. The starting time has not yet been set. The January meeting will be the first meeting for the new Triumph Board Chairman, former Senator Don Gates.
That's good. That is here in Franklin County.
Okay, item, oh, I have two, item number four, sorry about that. That's really item number five, bottom of the page there. I inform the board, the U.S. Treasury requested two minor modifications to the Dewberry Contract Amendment. The board approved November 7th. I have discussed these amendments with Mr. Schuler, and he felt they were so minor as not to require additional board action. The modifications were correcting the title of the amendment and then adding two contracts by reference that Dewberry has with their subcontractors. I will provide the board a copy of the contract amendment with its new and correct title as Dewberry Contract Addendum Number Three. So, there's no more, not need for any more action because it's minor. And then last item is, we already dealt with it, which was the, the DAX, the DAX contract. So, unless there's anything else, that's my report for the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have something that I may.
Okay.
Alan, I don't know if you've read, read this yet.
It's something I recently got.
Let me let you read that email.
Okay.
If you would pass it down to other commissioners, so y'all can see it, sir. I want you to go and note, based on what we have been told about DAX trying to get out of reshelling of Apalachicola Bay, that email was confusing to me, so I was just gonna bring it up today.
Sure.
See if that matches what you've been told.
Yes, and I'll read it out loud for the record. It's just one paragraph. This is from Cal Knickerbocker to Chris Langston. I believe Chris was at the last board meeting. It says, "Chris, I'm sorry that you've been given some incomplete and inaccurate information. The current coach planning project will be, will be the last project DAX has funding to complete, but I'm pretty sure there will be additional Oyster Restoration Projects in the future. BP Deepwater Horizon Oil Spill Settlement Funds will be available for future projects. The focus of these projects will be determined at the local county level. This will happen for multiple years. You may hear it referred to as Gulf Triumph Projects or Bucket Three Restore Funding. I hope this clarifies what you've heard. Anytime you have any questions, please feel free to contact the department. I'll gladly share with what I know. Thanks, Cal." Well, in a way, this, as far as I'm concerned, this email is misleading and incomplete, because Mr. Knickerbocker is implying that, well, he's stating outright that the planning project that's currently going on will be the last project DAX has funding to complete. And then he goes on to say, "Well, there's gonna be other money." Well, Mr. Knickerbocker has no idea about that other money, because it's not of his concern. He says that, and yet he's implying that, that, that there's gonna be future shelling programs. There's not, if the State of Florida's not gonna do it, they're, they're trying to put the county in the responsible role of being totally responsible for the bay, and that's not our position.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Marone, get up here. I wanna ask you a question. We've been over this past few meetings discussing, thank you, Mr. Chairman, coming and maybe taking, the county maybe taking the license, the Oyster license for Apalachicola Bay, have we not?
Yes.
And if this is true, what Mr. Cal Knickerbocker says, because you've talked, some of y'all have talked to Cal Knickerbocker about the county taking the license and doing the license.
I have, yes.
This is the reason why I called Michael. Okay, you've also talked to Senator Bill Monford's office about it. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're leaning toward the City of Apalachicola doing it, right?
Yes.
Okay, why would they be doing that if what Cal Knickerbocker says in this email is true? Why, if, if, if it's gonna be a county project, the reshelling and all that's gonna be county projects, why are we giving the runaround that, you know, it's not best for the county to do the license, the City of Apalachicola's doing it? Why not have, if we're gonna do the reshelling, why should we not have the license? See what I'm saying?
That is why I do not have that draft letter you guys directed me to write at last meeting, because I was a little confused when I saw this email, like, well, wait a minute now. Let me see how the board feels about this, to see what additional language you want me to include in that letter to DAX and to our legislative delegation about the, the funding, the licenses, and then who gets to keep the money, you know, for, you know, matched for stuff like reshelling.
It don't make no sense, y'all.
It does not.
It does not make no sense. I think we need to write a letter or contact somebody about this, because they're not saying the same thing now that they did a month ago. So, like I said last meeting, somebody's not telling the truth here.
Well, I think, my opinion for y'all is that the letter needs to go to our legislators, because that's who's, that's who's driving the car right now. It's gonna be an act by the legislature to change the current statute from DAX having the license to somebody else. And right now, the proposed legislation of the City of Apalachicola do it. That proposed legislation needs to change, or, or be eliminated or something. To me, it's the legislators who.
Is that your recommend, I mean, what would be your recommend, your, to Michael's recommendation for this board to do?
That, and I guess what worries me the most in, in the legislation that I read is that, and I keep saying this, whatever money is beyond what the city can keep for administrative costs, there's no specific language as to what the checking balances for that money. And that is the money that we'll use for a match, God willing, we could do any kind of program.
Yeah.
You see, I mean, there's a list in the legislation of what they can use it for and what they can't, but at least when DAX was doing it, it was probably going in one of the inspector generals', you know, trust accounts where they were checking balances. It doesn't, it doesn't explain a checking balance, and that worries me. That really does.
Well.
That was the main concern for the letter, I've begun.
As Commissioner Sanders stated, it's, it's very confusing and, and hard to keep up with. They're gonna continue to do the, show the videos before we get the certification, and why are they not just gonna issue the license?
That's what I'm saying. It don't make no sense, y'all.
I mean, that don't make no sense to me either.
Because that's another statute that requires them to do that video. I talked to Cal specifically about that. He said, "We're forced under another statute to show the video and to, and to do the health sanitation," because that's ISSC stuff being directed to the state of Florida. So, they're stuck with having to do that for, for health sanitation issues.
I mean, but if they're gonna do that part, why don't they just write out the license too? I mean, I don't, I don't understand what the big deal is.
Because they're trying to get out of monitoring the Oyster industry. That's what they're trying to accomplish, and so they're stuck with one.
Well, they need to keep, keep the licenses and show the videos too.
Yeah.
And, and do away with all this city-county stuff, and if you're gonna do the videos, why can't you, I mean, I don't understand why they don't wanna issue the license. I don't understand that.
And to me, Commissioner, then all they have to do is say, "Okay, city, I mean, county, we're gonna give you the money beyond what we consider administrative costs, since you guys will be the ones that probably be running some kind of reshelling program in the future." You see? But they should do it from A to Z.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, they just need to stay where they're at.
Yeah.
They do the, they require to do the videos and all. Is there another statute that requires them to issue the license too? And they're trying to get out the money they need?
I would have tried to change.
I'd like to see the board write a letter to a legislative delegation and to the governor also, stating that, that DAX keep that and not give it away to somebody else.
So, move.
Second.
To the governor and to the legislative delegation. And, and I'm gonna go one step farther to Commissioner Adam Putnam with the Department of Agriculture.
Yep. Okay. So, they just stay where they're at, issue the license, and they gotta do the videos.
They're doing all the work.
I mean, it's.
It don't make no sense.
Yep. It don't make no sense to me at all.
I know. Alan, you talked to Cal Knickerbocker, and that's why he told you.
Yes, that's right.
And then he writes, do you?
Yes. And this is after, I spoke to Cal, and I spoke to Cal probably a month or six weeks ago. And so, I mean, he told me the same thing, this is the last, the funding, the Oyster project, which is just now completed, is the last one they're doing. They have no plans for any future ones. And so, it's a little misleading for them, for them to state to write, "Well, there are other projects." Well, he doesn't know that. It's not his, they've already, they've already dumped that on us. So, he should have just said, "Please contact your local governor," or whatever. He shouldn't imply that there is gonna be future shelling, because we don't know there is. Right now, we have a project in our, in our state expenditure plan. We don't know if the governor's gonna approve it. We don't know when it's gonna come about. It's, it's gonna be at least five years. It could be 10 years.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we hadn't done a state expenditure plan yet.
No.
That's what I was saying. It's a little bit premature to be saying what you're, you know, gonna do when you don't even know what you're gonna do yet.
Right.
But.
That letter, your letter needs to include that. This, this email that everybody's just looked at, where he's talking about there will be future, he don't know that. He needs to stop making those statements.
Yeah.
You know, that needs to be included in.
Yeah.
That's, that's like somebody in his office said that, "I said there's a $5 million project going on."
(laughing).
I've never said that.
I didn't hear it.
I've never said that. And I don't know if any of the rest of the board members have said that, but I didn't say it, but they're directing it at me, and it comes from the Department, well, they said Department of Natural Resources, but it comes from F-Dax.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you can tell them I said they don't need no license. They need to get rid of the license theory. That'll stop all this. I don't see why they got license. People in, Apalachicola don't have no license. People in South Fork don't have no license. What color, and on down South Florida, nobody got license but Franklin County. What's up with this? Get rid of the license. It ain't nothing but, it don't make sense to have.
Well, I mean, I mean, the license had a value of 20 years ago, when the bay was full productivity, and we wanted to, we wanted to know who was out there harvesting Oysters. But I agree with Commissioner Likely, the world has changed dramatically, you know. We hope it goes back to full productivity, but it's a long way from happening.
It ain't, it ain't, it ain't wasn't doing no good then. I mean.
No, but at least we knew what, we knew how many people were out there. I mean, I, I mean, I don't say it.
I mean, you're trying to keep people out of here, but the people of here can go everywhere.
That's correct.
That's not right.
I'm not just.[1584.65] I'm not just...
I mean, you can't, you can't have, you can't get it to, gotta do it right.
Would you have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
I did.
But I, I do have a, a question, and maybe I'm just covering old ground here, if I may, Mr. Chairman. On, on, any future shelling projects that the county may participate in or, or fund in the future, who, who are we gonna get permission from going forward if the City of Apalachicola has the licensing authority? And the statute refers to them being in charge of, you know, shelling and recycling programs in the bay. Exactly who'd the county go to to get, you know, the permit, so to speak, to do the reshelling for the state of Florida?
That's a good question.
Good question.
That's a good question, that's what we're saying.
Good question.
Mr. Chairman, may I respectfully request that the Commissioners authorize my to pose a question in some, some form, and I'll just state it and get a response back from...
And within that letter?
Or whatever form the Commissioners might consider.
Yeah.
So you're in the motion?
I'm in my motion to reply to that.
In your second?
Mm-hmm.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
That's it.
That's any of your report, Alan?
I got, Mr. Chairman, if you'll just bear with me a minute, I got, I got something, since we're talking about this, and it was about what subject that we had been brought before us last meeting and all, and I have to say, you, you do better work when you let cooler heads prevail. I can say that my temper got a little bit away from me last week when I was challenged on my ethics. I said, "That's nothing, I, I, there's one thing I can tell you, is my ethics is my ethics, and that's what I'm all about." But one of the subjects that came before us was, was Mr. Chris Langston and Mr. Jane Langston, was their request for us to write a letter in support of, now, this is, this is the kicker, it was in support of the company that they're gonna name, they haven't named yet, to lease property from Tate's Hell Forest, and I think it's apparently around, somewhere around 200 acres, I think, or something like that, around there, and I don't feel like we need to let this lie. The state forest was purchased with coral funds, with Preservation 2000 Funds, and with Florida Forever Fund, and that's preservation money, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna make a motion right now that we write a letter of, of objection to Department of Ag and copy the Governor and Cabinet on this, that we do not support anyone coming and leasing any part of Tate's Hell Forest for any private business activity. And that's my motion, because I, I just do not think that we need to be in the business of supporting that. We don't have any other companies coming in here and asking us to support that, and for to take 200 acres out of Tate's Hell for a private entity, it concerns me. So I, I in no way support that. I think it, I think it's wrong for private entities to have that right to come in and lease state-owned properties, especially when it was bought with preservation money, and so that's my motion to do that.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
Sir?
We have a second by Commissioner Jones.
Should the letter go to Department of Ag or Department of Division of Forestry who manages the land?
Well, it needs to be, let me, let me tell you how it gets, it's Governor and Cabinet, Department of Ag, Division of Forestry, and the local Division of Forestry too, I'll say. It's where the letters need to go to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, can I ask a question? What, on this, do, do that man own any land up there?
He owns right where the, the pit, that he's wanting to put the pit at, he owns that property, but, but that's it. And, and this, and now, Mr. Noah, this is about leasing state property for a private business, and...
Apparently, he's found a source of shells that's beyond his current lease, and it's in state land, he's, and he wants to get his hands on that leased in-state land's what he wants.
Okay. That's what I'm, I'm trying to get straight into this, on his property, that we can't do nothing about that.
No, and he's, he's already mined all that out, or whatever, he's, he's wanting to expand it.
But this, I know, the Board sent me to about three or four Governor and Cabinet meetings to support the state buying this property for preservation and, and traditional uses, and, and I know that I stood before the Governor and Cabinet, speaking on behalf of Franklin County, I was sent there. So, you know, I, I cannot, with clear mind or body, support something like that, that takes it completely out.
And I can't believe the state of Florida would support it either, actually, I mean, Commissioner Sanders is exactly right, there's a ball of preservation money, and then to put a strip, basically a strip mine in the middle of the forest, I don't believe they would support it, so I'm very surprised it's even gotten this far, but...
Well, the thing about it is, is we need to make a clear statement of where we go, where, where for what we have been in all along, and that's to make sure that we understand what we have and protect it, and that's it. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
My question.
Okay.
What have the state want to go in there and do?
They own the land.
They own the land.
They're not, they're not in doing strip mine.
But we already know DAX is not in the business of getting oyster shells, we, we already know that, so...
I'm sure.
I see Ms. Kim Bowden is here now, would you come forward, state your name for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Kim Bowden, Executive Director for Career Source Golf Cast. Good morning, I, I'm interested and, and somewhat happy that I'm not involved in shelling at the moment, or DAX, but it's...
It could be, if you want.
It's certainly an interesting, an interesting conversation, and, and I'm sure an ongoing conversation. I'm here to ask your approval for, for an MOU infrastructure funding agreement. These are, you have several documents that were sent ahead under the Workforce Innovation Act, which is a federal law, which a portion of our funding comes through for training people. We're required to strike infrastructure funding agreements with six required partners. So let me just tell you, the philosophy behind this is good, but like many things with the federal government, it's incredibly more complicated probably than it ever should be. The, the philosophy behind it is that, you know, they want the right partners working together to help people find jobs and to get training, but the, the backside of that is, they come up with these budget structure agreements where even people who aren't located in our centers must pay a portion of the cost. And so if you've looked at the agreements, you'll see this budget, it's, it's hard to